I'd like to call the council meeting of Monday, March 21st, 2022 to order. If I can have our city clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Here.
Councilman Madugo.
Here.
Councilman Pierce is absent. Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda approval. I'm going to request that we remove item number 13 into the upcoming meeting. For failure, to provide notification, I believe.
Motion to approve the agenda, removing item number 13.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Dugo, to approve the agenda with the removal of item 13. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes 4-0. All right, moving on to comments from the public. For agenda items only, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we are now moving to special business. Our first item tonight is the announcement of the 2022 election results. Handing it over to our city clerk, Quintella Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The March 8th, 2020 municipal election winners are as follow. Mr. Peter Noble, District Number 2. Ms. Judy Dugo, District Number 3. Mrs. Suzie Diaz, District 4. Congratulations to you all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to all three. All right, we are now going to move on to item 2, motion to accept election results.
Motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously for 0. All right, so now to the fun part of the evening. We're going to move to the Oaths of Office, and that's going to be performed by our city clerk, Quintella Moore.
Okay, I'll be calling them by district, so Mr. Noble, if you want to stay there or come down, it's fine. You stay up there, or you want to come down?
Come down. Go down.
Mr. Noble, I have to stand right here so I also can get some pictures up for you. Speak loudly so no one can hear us. Okay.
Read that.
You can read it into the record if you would like to, or you can repeat after me if you want. You want to repeat after me? All right. I state your name.
I, Peter Noble.
A citizen of the State of Florida.
A citizen of the State of Florida.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And been an officer of the City of Green Acres, Florida.
And being an officer of the City of Green Acres, Florida.
And a recipient of public funds as such officer.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such officer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Of the State of Florida and the City of Green Acres.
Of the State of Florida and the City of Green Acres.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Misses Dugo, please. Congratulations, Mr. Noble.
Congratulations, Mr. Noble.
Congratulations, Peter.
Okay. All right, so I state your name.
I, Judith Dugo.
A citizen of the State of Florida.
A citizen of the State of Florida.
The United States of America.
And the United States.
And been an officer of the City of Green Acres.
And been the officer of the City of Green Acres.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such officer, do solemnly swear or affirm.
As such officer, I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
Of the State of Florida and the City of Green Acres.
Of the State of Florida and the City of Green Acres.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Quinn.
Oh my goodness, thank you, Quinn.
Thank you.
Ms. Diaz. Hello. There you go. I state your name.
I, Susan Diaz Diazco.
A citizen of the State of Florida.
A citizen of the State of Florida.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And been an officer of the City of Green Acres.
And been an officer of the City of Green Acres.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such officer, do solemnly swear or affirm.
And as such officer, do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The State of Florida and the City of Green Acres.
The State of Florida and the City of Green Acres.
Congratulations. There you go, Quinn. Congratulations.
All right, so... No, no.
Thank you.
Okay. What we do for administrative. First of all, congratulations to the three council members that were elected. It's an honor and a privilege to have our residents elect each and every one of you. Our city has spoken, and I look forward to, and I believe that the rest of the council feels the same way, we look forward to working with everyone in the council. Just, you know, we're here, we're elected to represent the people that put us in office, and ultimately, all the decisions that we make should be reflected upon our residents. So, with that being said, once again, congratulations. I look forward to working with everyone here on the base, and if anybody else has any comments, I'd be more than happy to... Councilmember Noble, anything you want to share? Councilmember Dugo?
Not at this time.
And Councilmember Diaz?
I just want to thank you. I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank my family, our friends, our supporters. I'd like to thank all of my fellow council members for their warm welcome. I look forward to moving forward in unity and collaboration for the greater good of our City of Green Acres. Thank you.
Councilmember Dugo?
Thank you. As I enter my next term to serve the residents of Green Acres, there's much I wanted to accomplish. We talk about living the American dream, and there are many of us right here in Green Acres doing exactly that. It's our job as leaders to help all the residents achieve this through collaboration and teamwork with our community partners and instilling a sense of pride and integrity to all our residents. We've invested in safe sidewalks, beautified our medians, and installed LED lighting for improved street lighting. Why not take it to the next level? With gas prices increasing and our environment demanding change, why not encourage our residents to take public transportation through our bus system? Families need affordable and reliable ways to travel to and from work. Our seniors need transportation for medical reasons and for medical services. I'd like for us to work together with Palm Tran and increase awareness of these services throughout Green Acres. Let's work together to improve bus stops, signage, and crosswalks so that all our residents have equal and safe access to public transportation. I'm not here to serve only one segment of our population, but to serve all of Green Acres. That includes all ages, sexes, cultures, and races. We're land of equal opportunity, and Green Acres offers the same. My doors open to anyone, my phone is public. I'm here to listen and act. I want every Green Acres resident to succeed, whether it's an eight-year-old boy playing pickleball at our park, a young single mother of two needing public transportation, a father seeking employment at City Hall to provide for his family, or senior citizen needing a safe bicycle path to exercise. It's a moral obligation for all Green Acres residents. My commitment is to the residents of Green Acres. If you want to live the American dream, I want to make sure that the Green Acres doors are wide open for you to do that, and that we offer the variety of services and opportunities to succeed. I want to make sure that the business community succeeds, so that small businesses prosper and employment opportunities flourish for our residents. I'm proud to be a Green Acres resident. I'm proud to be a Floridian, and I'm proud to be an American, and I want all of you to be proud to be in Green Acres. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 4 under special business. We have a proclamation today for School District of Palm Beach County and Education Foundation. Palm Beach County Teacher of the Year for 2022, Ms. Annabelle Wagner, Green Acres Elementary School. And we have a proclamation, correct? If I can have the city clerk please read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres, Florida, recognizing Ms. Annabelle Wagner at Green Acres Elementary as the School District of Palm Beach County along with the Education Foundation of Palm Beach County's 2022 Teacher of the Year. Mayor Flores, City of Green Acres Council recognizes Ms. Annabelle Wagner at the City of Green Acres Elementary as the School District School Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
So today is a special day because we got to recognize our council members that were elected, and today we get to recognize my mother. This young lady here to my right was selected Teacher of the Year for Palm Beach County. Had nothing to do with Green Acres, had nothing to do with me, I didn't wreck the system. It was all done fair and square, and, you know, Mom, I'm just incredibly proud of you.
Oh my gosh.
Of what you have done with your life, where you have come from, from the humble beginnings, where you took care of two children, my sister's here, and thank you. And to me, this, what Palm Beach County School District did, recognizing your Teacher of the Year is not only for me, is not only for the year, but it's for your life of service and what you have given back to the community, the numbers of lives that you have impacted, the amount of kids that you have probably taken off the roads, that you have given them a better, a better purpose in life. I'm extremely proud to be able to do this and to recognize you on behalf of the city, not only, not only for Palm Beach County, but she's one of our own teachers, Green Acres Elementary, and it's extremely rewarding, and we recognize, every year we recognize Teachers of the Years for every school in Green Acres, because we recognize that education is the foundation to change the culture of a city and to improve and to make it better. So today, I just want to say I'm extremely proud of you, and I'm pretty sure the City of Green Acres feels the same way.
Good evening, everyone. I am truly honored to receive this proclamation. I am a teacher here in Green Acres Elementary, and every day I receive the students at the door. That's my post every morning, and it's with pleasure that I receive them, and sometimes a little kid comes crying in the morning because he had an argument with mom because he wanted to wear a certain thing, and mom didn't leave him, and he's crying, or the little kindergarteners that don't want to go to school that day, they want to stay with mom. So I'm able to calm them down, hold their hands, and walk them to the classroom. That's the best part of the day. So I look forward to that every day and to service the students here in Green Acres, their families, they're very humble, and they are the type of parents that say, you know, you're the teacher, you know better, you know what to do with my child, whatever you want to do, it's okay with me. That's the community of Green Acres parent. I want to thank you all for this recognition. I'm not only representing Green Acres, but I represent all the teachers in Palm Beach County, and we'll see what happens next. I've been teaching for 32 years, and there's more of me still here in Green Acres. I will retire in Green Acres, so, but I'll still have a couple more years that I want to continue teaching. And thank you. Thank you all.
I have no idea why I came back up here, but I'll go back down in a minute. We have another proclamation, Let's Move, which is a great organization here in Palm Beach County, well, thank you for everything that you do. But if I can have our city clerk please read the proclamation by title.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres, Florida, proclaiming March 2020 as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month. The City of Green Acres do hereby proclaim the month of March as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month and urge all citizens to join us in moving to improve their fitness, mental health, and overall health.
Oh, man. This last act, man, I don't know if I could follow it, but yeah, congratulations, Palm Beach County School District, and, oh, man, 32 years. Yeah. I would also like to congratulate Ms. Suzie, yes, and also congratulations to all the council members that was joining today. Thank you to all the members for this proclamation. Let's Move was first brought about by Michelle Obama, and Palm Hill Foundation thought it was a really neat initiative to get Palm Beach County up and moving. So Palm Hill Foundation made it a county-wide effort to get Palm Beach County to be up and moving, to do any type of physical activity, it could be running, dancing, walking the dog, whatever type of movement that you do, and they have that platform online to log in those minutes. So it's a really cool way, fun way of challenging people to really work out and stay active, you know, in that sense. So back in 2012, when Palm Hill Foundation started the Let's Move, 100,000 minutes was logged by Palm Beach County. So fast forward to 2021, 59 million minutes was logged by Palm Beach County. So that's, that's how Palm Beach County comes together, you know. It's also a really cool way to bring the county together, you know, in that sense. So that's, I'm very proud of this initiative, Palm Hill Foundation, passed the torch to digital vibes to run this initiative, and it's been a very phenomenal journey. So I would like to challenge the City of Green Acres, because it's a city, it's a city versus city challenge. Last year, we had the, we had the Village of Wellington won the challenge, so, and we would like to see Green Acres go ahead and, you know, log in your minutes, that's pretty much what it's all about, you know? Challenge taken?
Absolutely.
Man, today has been a great meeting, so far, and it's only going to get better. Our next presentation is to, it's a certificate of appreciation to Deputy Sheriff Edward Devalos, and we're going to say a few words, and we're going to present him with a small token of our appreciation, but before I kick it over to Andrea, I would like to speak about my experience with our, our community liaison for PBSO here in the city. I have no idea how Captain Moore roped me into coaching basketball while I was the mayor of the city, but he knew that I enjoy working with our youth and our kids. To me, it means a lot, and he put me with Deputy Devalos, and for a whole season, we ran the PAL Basketball, Basketball League, and I got to meet Deputy Devalos on a personal level, I got to see him interact with our youth, with our community, I really got to see what kind of person, person he is. He may look tough, and he's always all dressed up to the nine, but man, he's, he's a great person, and, and, you know, I think that happens a lot with, with police officers because they're law enforcement, but man, Deputy Devalos is a great person, someone who cares about his community. I think two weeks ago, there was a gathering, and I called, Deputy Devalos shut up like 10 minutes later. He was there, helping, helping with the community, which is the type of person that he is. He's a, he's a people person. He cares about his community, and I've had my interactions with him, and what I've seen, he has displayed what it's, what it is to, to serve Green Acres, what it is to, to wear that, that uniform every single day. He lives up to his code of honor, and I have nothing but respect for you, Deputy Devalos. Thank you so much for your service here at the City of Green Acres, and I wish you nothing but success in your, as you continue your career. So that's, that's for me. If there's any council members that want to speak, I'll, I'm going to let them go first, and then I'm going to let Andrea please go last. So I'll start here, I'm looking, anyone want to speak? Councilmember Diaz, and then Council, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Deputy, thank you.
Excuse me, Deputy Devalos. You have grown so much since I met you and your family, and you have done so much to be of service to our community. For that, I am incredibly grateful, and I know whatever you do and wherever you go, you will go far, and you will do so in kindness, because that is emanating from your every core. Thank you so much.
Hey, congratulations. So I think my first memory of you, we were outside doing a food drive. And someone came up and said that there's some kittens stuck in a car, and you rescued it, you went over, took care of them, and to this day, our city manager, it just goes to show that the true nature of you, and I appreciate you and everything you've done. I know you're going to do great things, you're going to be missed, you set the bar real high, and Captain, you're going to have a tough time replacing them. So thank you is all that I can say.
Deputy, now Detective Devalos, so congratulations to you. And I still do have that kitty cat, and I will tell you, of my three dogs and two cats, he is my best pet. He's wonderful, he is my favorite. So, you know, I just wanted to speak a little bit from a staff perspective, and I think that, you know, when you have the opportunity to, to get to know someone, to work with someone that, you know, makes the difference that you do, I think that, you know, all the things that you're hearing here today, all of the opportunities that you've been afforded, that you're going to continue to be afforded, they're going to come easily for you because of all the work that you do and as hard as you work and the commitment that you've made, you know, in the positions that you've held. I think that, you know, from a staff perspective, you integrated yourself onto our team, it was seamless, in a way that you were one of our own, and I have to say the same thing for PBSO, it's, there's no line between, you know, a vendor and, and the City of Green Acres and the services that you provide, and you were at our meetings with our code enforcement, you were at our meetings with our community and recreation staff, you were, you know, you were, and while you did all of these things because it was part of your job, you didn't do it because it was your job. You know, I think there was, you have a unique ability to be able to connect with people on so many different levels, and I know that the unit that you're going to be going to, the victims that you're going to be working with, their lives are going to only be better because of you. So we wish you only the best, we will miss you dearly, you will always have a home here in Green Acres, and best of luck to you in this new chapter.
Thank you. Please join me in congratulating Detective.
Detective.
Well, I know. I don't know why I get so emotional. I want to thank everybody in the city of Green Acres and the city council, and Sal Alson. I want to thank my mom. My beautiful wife Ruth Damon supported me from day one, and Captain Moore for picking me, giving me the opportunity to do what I do, and this is just, I'll see you later. I'll be back.
We're definitely holding you to that, by the way.
Yeah. I'll be back.
The three of us?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I'm photobombing. All right, I'm moving up to this last one. We have the evaluation appraisal report, and that's going to be by Karen Gardner Young, Sonny Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I don't know how I can beat the last presentation, so I'm sorry, but I'm going to try my best. I wanted the council to be aware that we're about to partake on a major task, and it will involve a lot of outreach, so I wanted everybody to be aware that we're going to begin this process. It's a long-term process, but I felt maybe it might be good to start at the beginning, so that's what I'm hoping to do here. So, go through. The state of Florida in regards to comprehensive plans are required by the state, and they implemented this quite a number of years ago, and the intention was really coordination, because many of the things with planning don't stop at a municipal boundary. And so they required every municipality to create what we call a comprehensive plan. So for us, I want to go through, what is a comprehensive plan, why is it important, why we need to update it, and then the process that we're going to take over the next couple, in the next year, year and a half. So first, what is a comprehensive plan? In short, a comprehensive plan is basically the vision of the city. So it tells you what we feel our needs are, it discusses our values and goals, talks about what physically we have, and also talks about conditions that may have changed. From this planning process, you actually get three documents, the comprehensive plan, the land development regulations, or many call the zoning code, and then ultimately your capital improvement projects, which go through your budget process. Now, there are required elements that are necessary when you adopt a comprehensive plan, and these are the ones that are there. You're required to have a land use, transportation, housing, and so forth going through the list. Now, you're entitled to do optional elements if you so wish. And for the city of Green Acres, we actually have an annexation, which is in place. We had a public school facilities, which was required in 2011. It has since no longer been a requirement, but we have an agreement already within Palm Beach County, so we follow it through there. And I'm actually going to be proposing two new elements, one being a community health element, and another one being redevelopment or economic development element. Now, why is the comprehensive plan important? So the comprehensive plan, first of all, it tells everybody who lives in the city, who wants to do business with the city, this is the city's vision. This is what we want to accomplish. It provides continuity, it's a long-term document. It's not one that you're changing every three years or every year. It's supposed to go 10 and 20 years into the future. It provides guidance, so it helps your staff understand what your goal and visions are for the future, so we can accomplish that through our zoning code, the budget, and the capital projects. And it also helps provide justification for decisions, including particularly grant monies. If we're going out for grant monies, it's always nice to have your comprehensive plan that indicates this is what you want to accomplish. And of course, the bottom one, which we always have to follow, it is statutorily required. Now, why do we need to update the comprehensive plan? So this is a lot of words, the long and the short of it is, every seven years, you're required to evaluate your comprehensive plan. You can make a determination that nothing needs to be done, or you can make a determination that some of the elements need to be reviewed, or all of the elements need to be reviewed. And typically, the reason why you would review it is if you had a change in population, a change in demographics, a change, for example, maybe you get a major roadway that goes through your city that you didn't have in the past. Based upon the fact that we've had substantial growth, and we have had demographic changes, I'm actually going to make a recommendation that we reevaluate all of our elements and take a look and see what we need. That includes reviewing all the data regarding it, because the comprehensive plan is two portions, it's goals and objectives, and it's data and analysis. And so we'll be evaluating all of that to come back to the commission. It is ultimately your decision at the end on what we adopt, but we're going to be doing, as I said, a lot of outreach. So what's the process that we're going to do to accomplish this comprehensive plan update? So here's the timeline. So this month, I'm doing an update both to you tonight, and I'm going to actually, we got delayed on our last PZAB meeting, but I'm going to do it in April, and we're going to go ahead, and we're going to do the same presentation to those members as well. The next meeting, you're going to see, we're going to hire a consultant to help us with some of this information. It is a lot of, like I said, data and analysis collection. Then from March through August, I'm going to be scheduling stakeholder meetings, and stakeholder meetings would be for the particular elements. So for example, your transportation element, we want to get input back from FDOT, the county. You know, when I have my community health, you go to community groups. Housing, you want to go to Palm Beach County housing. And again, you are going to be our proponents. So if there's anybody or any organization that you feel that you would like us to partake and bring them into the conversation, please, please contact me or Kara, and we will certainly put them on the list. So we're really getting a lot of public participation here to make sure we get all voices and opinions when it comes back to you on the final document. In addition, as I go through the elements, we're going to bring those back to the PZAB, and I'm not going to bring it all at once, because it'd be impossible for them to handle all at once. So we're going to bring them a little bit at a time, because we do have some time in order to accomplish what we need to get done. Then through August through February 2023, we're going to be drafting and creation of these elements, with the proposed plan of going to the PZAB on May 2023, the city council June 2023, and this does need to go back to the Department of Economic Opportunity. We're going to bring that in July 2023, and then we've got to wait for the state to come back to us when we can actually adopt the actual ordinance, which is what we'd have to adopt with the document. So that's really the short and the long, but I wanted you to be aware, like I said, because we will be outreach to different groups and organizations. I am going to be putting a survey on our website, so the residents, if they don't, you know, have an opportunity, will have an opportunity to provide us some comments. It's a very short survey, it's only about, I think, about 10 questions, but it does ask them, for example, you know, what area are you interested in the city addressing? And just kind of give us some feedback, so we have some idea where we're going in regards to these particular items. With that, I'll be available to answer any questions, but you'll be seeing me over the next, we have to have it adopted by September 2023. Otherwise, we can't do any comprehensive plan amendments or any map changes. That's the penalty for not getting it done in time. So I hope that was a short, but hopefully concise explanation of what we're doing.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Is there any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Diaz.
Hi, thank you so much. This is very, very informative. I did have a question. Are we in the process, including any of the thoughts that came forward for envisioning a strategic plan that was held?
So the question was, are we going to consider anything that was previously discussed in the strategic process that the city council? We're going to account for everything, okay? Because it's not, in my mind, it's not a staff opinion, it's the residents' opinion. You are the representative of the residents, so that's why I came to you tonight, because I'm looking for advice and support, and, you know, getting out there for me and letting them know that this is a process we're going to go through, and their opinions really do matter, and we'll try whatever mechanism we can in order to get it accomplished.
I would assume that includes businesses as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Economic development, they are going to be right in there.
Any other comments or questions? All right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
See you later.
If I can just ask all the council members to make sure that their mics are on? All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. All right, I have motion made by Deputy Mayor Starp, second by Councilmember Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Busque? I couldn't, I can't.
Oh, I said aye.
Yeah, okay. Motion carries 5-0. All right. All right, moving on to our regular agenda. Next item, public hearing for ordinance 2022-03, second reading. If I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-03, second reading, amending Chapter 15 utilities to include an additional article for expansion of Palm Beach County's wastewater system within the city of Green Acres, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
Excellent. And then we have today our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. We received notification from Palm Beach County that they are looking to expand their wastewater utility system. The map that you're looking at here really is unincorporated Palm Beach County, with the exception of the one parcel that's outlined in red that falls within the city's municipal boundaries. That is one of the reasons that this is brought before the council for consideration and your approval and adoption through ordinance, because one of the parcels that would fall within the proposed work area does fall within the city of Green Acres. The area that they're looking at is located south of 10th Avenue, northeast of Haverhill Road, west of Military Trail, and north of the Lake Worth Drainage District L11 Canal. Again, it is just one parcel, which is 4982 Cambridge Street. It is the Legacy Church Ministries of Green Acres. In order for that property to be included, the city's required to adopt an ordinance granting the county the authority to perform the project and to provide the service within the city's boundaries. It makes good sense in order for us to try and move away from septic towards sewer. This is a great initiative that the county is doing to convert this to their wastewater utility system, so the city does support it, and again, in order to do that, we need to bring this before the council for approval. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-03 on second reading, and there have been no changes from first reading to second reading.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Noble.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2022-3, second reading.
Second.
We have to go to the public.
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
I do have a question, City Manager McHugh.
Yes.
How do we get them to expand west from there?
Well, they're looking at their unincorporated areas. We're working on, as you know, we're in the final engineering and design phase of the conversion of septic to sewer along Swain Boulevard from 10th Avenue to Locworth Road, and along with that, we're also going to be bringing complete streets as well. It is going to change the landscape completely of the original section, and we're hoping that then we will be able to expand that into the other areas of the original section. But we are looking to Palm Beach County, we're working with Palm Beach County Utility, Water Utility District on some of the issues related to that, that we need some approvals on, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to get that moving here pretty soon, because we are, we're ready to move forward with it. Engineering and design is pretty much almost completed.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. I don't see anybody, any other council members? I'd like to open a public hearing for ordinance 2022-03. Anyone wishing to speak? In favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. I have a motion made by Councilmember Noble, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, moving on to our next item, public hearing, ordinance 2021-21, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-21, second reading, amending Green Acres Code of Ordinances at Chapter 12, Subdivisions and Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Improvements in Design Standards, Sections 12-65, by increasing the width of sidewalks from four feet to five feet, amending Green Acres Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Subdivisions and Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Improvements in Design Standards, Section 12-67 and 12-67D, tabled by increasing the street right-of-way width from 40 feet to 42 feet, providing for repeal of conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
And we have Karen Gardner Young, Sonny Administrator, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. As the clerk has stated, this is a zoning text amendment. It is the second reading. There were no changes from first reading to second reading, but I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on exactly what this ordinance is going to accomplish. The intent is to increase the sidewalk widths from four feet to five feet, okay? That would allow additional areas for people, for example, with wheelchairs, being able to walk side by side, allowing people to stand on the sidewalk, and other people could pass by. By requesting the increase in size, which is not unusual, four feet used to be a standard, it really isn't any longer, we now need to increase the right-of-way, because now we want to make sure we can have five feet on either side, so that's why we're requesting to go the right-of-way from 40 feet to 42 feet to account for the additional one foot on each side. So staff has reviewed it. It was recommended approval by the Planning Zoning Board of Adjustments. You approved it on first reading, no changes from first to second. We're asking that the file and all our documentation be included as part of the public record, and we'd ask that you approve this through ordinance number 2021-21. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Excellent. And just to clarify, that's on future?
That is correct, not anything that's already in the works.
Perfect. Any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Noble.
So the way I understand it, and I just want to verify, this ordinance doesn't change what we have in now, our right-of-way, but only at the time that that sidewalk or something needs to be repaired is when we move it to the new requirement?
That is correct. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the council? Seeing none, I'd like to open a public hearing for ordinance 2021-21. Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-21 on second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Starp, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. If you're keeping score at home, we have tabled what was item 13, so we're moving on to ordinance 2022-04, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-04, first reading, amending Chapter 16, Article 1 in general, Section 16-1, Article 4, supplement district regulations, Division 2, area and height limitations, Section 16-630, to address the size of accessory structures on large lots and provide regulations for mechanical or architectural equipment placed in the setbacks, providing for repeal of conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
And today, we have Director of Development and Neighborhood Services Kara Erwin Ferris presenting.
Good evening. Thank you very much. This is a zoning text amendment to our zoning code, and this is first reading of ordinance 2022-04. And just to give you a little background, the yards criteria, this is Section 16630, was adopted in 1966. It has been amended about three times, which is not a lot, and we're here tonight to amend it a fourth time for two separate reasons. The first is to address architectural and mechanical equipment in the setback. We did have some language in there talking about parts of your home that protrude into the setback, such as your overhang of your roof or architectural features, but we're taking it a little bit step forward. We're looking at balconies, air conditioners, chimneys, fountains, pool equipment. This is all things that are normally found within the setback, but our code doesn't address. And one of the big things that's come up over the past years is generators, because homes, because of hurricane readiness, want to have generators placed on their lot. I'm sure you've seen the commercials for Generac, where they can do a install, just like a propane tank or your air conditioning in the side yard, a generator that you fire up a couple times a year to make sure it works, and then it's there for you if you lose power. So we've addressed providing for those accessory or mechanical appearances within the setback of a yard. So in the area where we usually don't allow anything except for fences, we're addressing these different types of equipment that are generally found within the setback. And we're also updating our regulations for accessory structures on large lots. We did this a little while back in 2019. We had looked at accessory structures. Right now, our code limits them to 200 square feet, which is small. It's about a 10 by 20 shed. If you did not have a If you did not have a garage, you could go up to 600 square feet. And some of our smaller lots, which are less than a quarter acre, this is adequate, but when you're talking about some of our larger lots on agricultural or RL or RE, the lots, anything over a half an acre, it just wasn't, it didn't meet the needs, and it was just like a little tiny postage stamp on the yard when you would look. They were finding ways around that by connecting to the home, so now we're just addressing accessory structure on large lots, and we're increasing the square footage. And just to give you an indication, these are about half-acre lots in Pine Country on Piney Court, and you can see some of them already have, sorry, you can see some of them already have some accessory structures on the lot, and what we looked at was a ratio of what is allowed on the area of a lot within, say, the original section, which is usually about 50 by 130, or, you know, 6,500 square feet. And we looked at what the ratio would be, and we came up to about 1,200 square feet for accessory structures. And this would include anything from a garage. You could have a cabana, pool cabana. These are not, what our code does not allow though, are accessory dwelling units, so this would not be allowed as an accessory dwelling unit. There'd have to be some major changes to our code to allow that. So, staff is recommending approval of ZTA 20204. This is city-initiated by staff. We do recommend approval of ordinance 2022-04 to address these changes.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Noble, then Councilmember Dugo.
I'd like to move that we approve ordinance 2022-4 on the first reading.
All right. Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, we have a second. At this time, I'll move to comments or discussion, Councilmember Dugo.
Thank you. Ms. Ferris, you're generous at 1,200 square feet.
Yes.
And you can have another house or apartment on this property, but 1,200 square feet is pretty generous, so I'm not clear on that.
So, can I, we tried to do a ratio between what's acceptable within the smaller single-family lots and ratio it to what would be the same type of area used on a larger lot. We said this for lots a half acre or more. So, for instance, on the picture below, on the lot, on the right side of the screen, that structure's 1,200 square feet. So, some of the things that you can accommodate are storage, you can also have a garage, maybe put a boat and screen the boat. So, we have, in some of these larger lots, they have more, I don't want to say the word toys, but accessory type structures, and you only have so many on a property, so some of them want to build garages to put them in.
Gotcha, thank you.
I do have a question.
Councilmember Diaz.
Hi, thank you. I just had a question with regards to the items that can go in the setback. As far as equipment and such, does this address any pads that they need to be on? Obviously, you're not going to put a generator straight onto a pervious, or you're not going to have pool equipment that goes straight onto grass. Does this address any footers that might be required, or any sort of pads that might be required for those structures?
Yes, they would be required.
Okay.
And all this, everything within there would have to be secured, based on building code requirements.
Is square footage on the pad or on the roof?
We don't, we don't count pervious and impervious, like open space versus lock coverage. We don't count pavers or pads, concrete pads.
Got it.
It's just roof structure, so it doesn't hurt them. The only thing that the city's done is we have five-foot areas on the sides of lots that we keep open and grassed, and that's our drainage for most developments. So, like in some cities, you have to do all kinds of calculations for pervious versus impervious when you're applying for a permit. We don't do that because we have a set on every lot of what's required, and the other things don't count, like a driveway or patio space.
How does this compare to neighboring cities or villages, towns?
Similar, when you're looking, especially, we don't have a lot of large lots. We don't have a lot of areas that are zoned AR, RL1, or RE, so it helps address those larger lots that are there, and, you know, they have been struggling to, they've been finding ways to do it, but it's not always the best way to do it.
And my last comment or statement is, if there's an HOA that supersedes anything, right?
Right. HOA, well, we don't enforce HOA requirements. We enforce the building code, we enforce the art code, we leave it to the HOA to enforce their codes, but yes, they would, within the development, put requirements on the residents.
Excellent. I don't see any other comments or questions. I have a motion made by Councilmember Noble, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, moving on to ordinance 2022-05, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-05, first reading, amending Green Acres Code of Ordinances and Chapter 16 Zoning Regulations, Article 2 Administration, Section 33 Public Hearings, to include a development application approval and notice requirement chart, providing for repeal of conflict in ordinances, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have our zoning administrator Karen Garner Young presenting.
You've got, you've got us all night tonight, guys. Most of you and Kara are switching seats all night. As the clerk stated, this is basically, we're calling a zoning text amendment, it is for the purpose of adding an approval and notice requirement of development applications. It's a chart. And you're going to see over the next couple of months, over the year, we're trying to make the zoning code as user-friendly as we can. And I always like to say that using charts, graphs, I use the phrase in the bottom, a picture is worth a thousand words, right? It's just so much easier to understand something when you see it in a diagram or you see it in a chart, rather than having to go through all the words. So, we're proposing this text amendment, again, captures a reader's attention, it augments the written ideas, and it sometimes helps to understand a complicated process. Now, this is not a replacement for the existing language, okay? It's a supplement to, and it's to make it easier so somebody who's coming in and wants to do development, they can go right to the chart instead of having to go to four or five different places. So, what does the chart look like? Of course, on the screen I have here, this is the best I can do, but obviously, it'll be larger. So, really what it does is it tells you the development petition on the left side, it then discusses what the approvals are. So, do you have to go to commission? How many times do you have to go to council? Do you have to go to the planning board? Is it staff review only? And then the last category will tell you what the notice requirements are. Does it have to be in a newspaper? Is it just posting in City Hall? Whatever the requirements are. So, we put that in the chart, again, the idea, take what we have in writing and just substitute it in, and keep the written language, but supplement it through the actual writing.
To clarify, is that a digital chart?
No, it's not right now. It's really, I think, I have it in Word, I think, is what it is.
Okay.
But, I mean, as we go on, obviously, we get more sophisticated. I'd love to be able to do things like that, so I'll make sure I'll put it in the budget next year. So, we did take this to the recommending body, Development Review Committee, which is now under the Land Development Staff, reviewed the zoning text amendment on the 17th. I received no objections to what we're proposing today. We're asking that all items of the file and all documentation be included as part of the file. We're recommending approval of ZTA 2203 through the adoption of ordinance 2022-05. And I'm available to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Any questions or comments from the council? I don't know, but I think this is a great idea, making it a little bit easier and friendlier for developers. I like it. Seeing nothing, do I have a?
To approve 2022-05, second.
All right, a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, moving on to ordinance 2022-06, first reading. If I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-06, first reading, amending Chapter 7 Health Sanitation and Nuisance, Article 3 Noise in General, Section 7-56, to reduce construction hours per minute. Permit the city manager the right to approve noise outside the permitted hours, create new sanitation operating hours, and create new noise limitations on heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment and landscaping and yard maintenance, power tools, providing for repeal of conflict in ordinances, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
All right, and we have, once again, zoning administrator Karen Garner Young presenting.
Thank you Mayor, thank you council. You'll now begin to see where Kara and I are now crossing in regards to, brought in the generators, we're now going to be talking about noise. This code provision change is asking for, actually, four items. One is to modify our existing machinery and construction activities, and some of this came from complaints we received from residents about noise from construction. You know, that equipment can get very loud when they're doing items, so we wanted to bring back to you for consideration. But we also, other areas that, like Kara had, that we don't have anything. It's completely silent. So, these three areas that we're asking to add in some code amendments, and we'll go through what exactly they entail, is commercial sanitation. Okay, we're not talking residential, we're talking commercial. Adding heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, or HVAC. And then the last one is landscaping and yard maintenance with power tools or motorized equipment. I'm going to go through each one. So, the first one is the machinery and construction activities, and we're asking to modify this. And what we're asking, first of all, we're asking three things. One is to reduce by one hour the ability to create the construction noise. Our present stop time is 9:00 PM. We're asking to bring that down to 8:00 PM. The second one we're asking is to prohibit construction noise on Sundays and federal holidays. Presently, they can work on all those days. Now, I did do an analysis, and the mayor always asks what other jurisdictions are doing, and I will tell you that it's a combination. You will find that many of them do prohibit on Sundays where they have less hours, a lot of them do prohibit on holidays, but it could be a state holiday, a federal holiday. Wanted to start on the smaller and see where we go from here, because federal holidays, most people know. So, I figured, let's start with that, and again, I will tell you, a zoning code is a living document, so you're always changing it based on circumstances and vision. The last one is, we did put in a provision that would allow the city manager to approve outside the permitted hours if it's in the best interest of the city. And why do I say that? Because sometimes you might have to install like a sewer, and you're in the middle of the project, and what happens if you started on a Saturday and you need another 10 hours to get it done? We don't want them to stop. We really want them to go forward. So, that's why they have to come back and ask the city manager, so that she will know and then could let people in the area and let you know as well that that was a request. So, that's a modification. The next one is, again, commercial sanitation operations. Presently, we have no restriction to over noise whatsoever. So, we are proposing no loading, unloading, opening, or otherwise handling boxes, crates, containers, garbage cans, or recyclable containers between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM if the operations are within 250 feet of residential use. So, if you're in a commercial development, and there's nothing around you other than commercial, we're saying, go for it. We're not going to tell you to stop. But if you're around residential, because some people may not need to be up at 7:00 AM in the morning, we want to make sure that we at least give them some opportunity to get a good night's sleep, which they're all telling us we need, of course. So, that's the new one. So, we have no regulations. We're asking to do between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, but only if you're within a certain feet of a residential area. The next one is heating, ventilation, and AC equipment. Presently, we have no restrictions whatsoever. We are proposing operations on residential property if it's above 80 decibels between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM when measured within the premises of where the person is complaining, because that's important to tell where you're going to be, right? So, we're saying 10:00 PM, 7:00 AM, again, corresponds to what we're doing with the sanitation. Again, 60 decibels is talking, just to kind of give you an idea. We had started this process actually at a 40-decibel level, realized that that's really too low, so that's why we put it up to the 80 decibel per hour. I would say loud, loud noises is like 120, so we're in between what you would do as a talking, and we felt was a pretty reasonable decibel level. And then the last one is landscaping and yard maintenance power tools. Presently, again, no restrictions. What we're proposing is Monday through Friday not to allow it before 7:00 AM, or, should be after 8:00 PM, sorry, not 8:00 AM, otherwise we'd have a really short time period, and then Saturday and Sunday not allowed before 8:00 AM or after 6:00 PM. So, again, trying to keep things in this iteration, people may want to be doing things around their houses, nobody wants to hear that leaf blower going really loud, so that was kind of the thought pattern for that particular request. The Development Review Committee reviewed this code amendment on March 10th and 17th. No objections were received, but the suggestion on the decibel level for the HVAC units was incorporated into the ordinance. And we are recommending approval of ZTA 2022-02 through adoption of ordinance 2022-06. We ask that all materials and information be included as part of the file, and I am available to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Any comments or questions from the council?
Quick one.
All right, Councilmember Dugo, and then Deputy Mayor Tharp.
On the construction, and the reason I'm asking this is we're putting all new roofs where I live. The stop time was 8:00 PM.
That's the proposed, yes.
Okay. When is the start time?
So, the start time, oh.
I'm waking up.
Not changing this.
Keep in mind, this is commercial, right?
This is commercial activity. Well, machinery and construction, and I apologize, I don't.
You know what? I'm sorry.
No, don't, I should have had it.
But it's on commercial property or?
No, it's on any property.
On any property.
Any property. It's construction activity.
Activity, got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're not changing it, which is why I didn't, I didn't, let's see, we got it. So, it is?
7:00 AM?
7:00 AM, correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have 24 billion dollars to talk.
Deputy Mayor Tharp?
Question with regards to the landscapers, specifically the leaf blowers. I know another municipality has just banned them, starting in May. They are incredibly loud. 8:00 AM. With a lot of people working from home nowadays, I think it's something that we might want, I'm not saying for this go-around, but it's something that we may want to start considering, looking at, they are, those alternatives, I think that's something we should look towards for the future.
All right, I got a couple of things here. Federal holidays. So, if your weekend warrior wants to do something at the house, and he wants to utilize that extended weekend, they can't do that right now?
Right now, they can do it, it is not prohibited.
But moving forward with this?
But moving forward, on a federal holiday, they would not be able to do it unless they made a petition to the city manager, and the city manager authorized it.
Okay.
Can you define your weekend warrior project, I guess would be my question?
I mean demolishing a bathroom, jackhammering, you know, because if you live in a townhouse, you can hear that on the other unit, right? So, I don't know. I guess I'm putting myself in their shoes, and how would that affect someone if they want to utilize a long weekend to do a project? And then, on 250 feet, that's less than a football field. Is that enough? I guess that's what I'm measuring. I'm visioning a football field, so, once again, I guess, you know, how is that, is this, the 250 a normal distance for sound? I, I'm not an expert on sound.
Right. You know what? This is first reading, so why don't I come back on second reading and give you some backup to the 250?
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Diaz.
And perhaps it's in a different part of the code, but what happens if they don't follow the rules? Like, how is this enforced?
So, it's enforced typically through your code enforcement.
Okay.
So, what would happen is we would come out, we would make a determination, is it a violation, and then typically, a citation would be issued.
So, would code enforcement then work off their regular schedule? Because it looks like the hours that we're saying it would happen, so a regular person is having an issue, construction goes beyond, what recourse do they have to report this so that it stops?
So, it typically, and I haven't talked, it's typically police and code enforcement kind of go hand in hand together, but again, great questions. I'll talk with Kara, and we'll figure out kind of what the process is.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments or questions. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-06? I do have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-06.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. A motion made by Councilmember Dugel, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. Moving on to ordinance 2022-08, first reading. If I can have the city clerk please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-08, first reading, amending Chapter 11, streets, sidewalks, other public places, Article 5, placement of communication facilities in public rights away, Section 11-101, placement or maintenance of a communication facility in public rights away to address the requirements for city co-location opportunities on micro tower infrastructures within city rights away, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
Yeah, and we want to, by the way, for everybody here, so that you understand why we repeat the names, although we see the faces, it's because this is public record, and you can, at home, you can actually listen to the audio, and it's so that they are recognizable. So that's why I introduce them, and that's why they introduce themselves. So Director of Development and Neighborhood Services Kara Irwin first presenting.
Thank you. This is actually, this is not a zoning text amendment. This is a code amendment to Chapter 11, streets, sidewalks, and other public places. This is a very simple amendment relative to micro towers and the possibility for co-location on those micro towers. You may remember in 2017, the city initiated a request to amend this chapter. This was approved through ordinance 201731, and it addressed House Bill 687. This is the Advanced Wireless Infrastructure Deployment Act. If you remember, it was the cell tower utility company, they were given utility status. So they were able now to go in the right-of-way with the micro towers. So you're used to approving these large 150-foot towers, like the one we have behind you on city property. They lease these properties, they co-locate on them with city and up to sometimes two or three other providers. But what happened is the technology was getting smaller, and they were creating micro towers, and they wanted to go in the right-of-way. Just like FPL, just like Bell South did in the beginning, just like you have mini utilities, Comcast or others, they wanted that same ability. So they did. We addressed it in the code, and we actually put some provisions in place so that we didn't get, you know, 50-foot towers in the right-of-way, or 58-foot towers that looked out of scale or out of proportion with what's existing. So our codes address height. It has to be consistent with what's there within a small incremental change. It has to look like what's there. We don't want it to stand out any more than it already does. And this has been successful so far. They have to register their equipment, register with us, and then they go, they get permits in the right-of-way. So we've done quite a few of these. You may have noticed them. We have some in the original section, we have some on South 57th Avenue in different locations within the city that these micro towers have popped up. They also have sometimes utility equipment connections, electric that also goes with them. So the issue that we've come upon recently is the request to co-locate on them. We currently do have a requirement in the code for the larger towers. They have to leave a portion of, when we lease, they have to leave a portion open for the city to co-locate. Whether it's an antenna for our public services, or some sort of, something we have to put up high, a camera, we're allowed to co-locate on them. And actually, what we're doing here is we're asking for the same ability within the public right-of-way. So this is Section 11-101, and this is the process for the placement and maintenance of a communication facility in a public right-of-way. So these are for micro towers, and really, we're just adding two additional sections. We're adding V, which is shared use. We want to discourage proliferation of new and small wireless facilities. We want shared use of the structures. It's permitted and it's encouraged. So if multiple people can use the same infrastructure, we would rather that than a proliferation within the right-of-way. And then we also are looking that during the permit process to dedication of use to the city of Green Acres. So during the permanent view process and after, as conditions of approval, the city may require the dedication of space on a lower, on a tower for communication and our surveillance equipment as required for city use. So this is something that would be done during the permit, and we can have additional departments to say whether or not they need the ability to provide additional equipment on these facilities. And with those changes, it would be a request, and then we would go through the process to have, you know, things like weight or connections figured out during the permit process as opposed to later. So it would be wired accordingly, and it would be able to take the weight accordingly. Staff does recommend approval on first reading of ordinance 2022-05, which makes changes to Chapter 11 to allow for the co-location.
Are these the big brown boxes on the poles that were, weren't they preempted by the state that we basically couldn't say no?
Yeah, we can't, we can't say no. These are little micro towers. And micro is kind of a generous word. They're a lot bigger than micro. But they're not the, the huge ones in the back, but so I guess in ratio, they're, they're micro towers to them. But they can be as tall as 30 feet, 24 feet. Initially, we did have people coming in to do 50-foot or 58-foot ones in front of, you know, Target on Lake Worth Road, and we were able to say no because you adopted the code and were, you know, reducing the impact visually in the clutter along the right-of-way.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Council? Deputy Mayor Tharp?
2022-05 or 08, sorry?
08.
08, I apologize. Yeah, that was my.
Then I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-08 on first reading.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, we're getting to the fun one. All right, we're moving on to the quasi-judicial public hearing for Resolution 2022-05. All right, so the mayor asked to read the quasi-judicial process PowerPoint instructions. It's my chichi.
Kara, it's coming. Okay.
Yep, if you want to go ahead and read the instructions.
Thank you. Tonight, we're holding a quasi-judicial hearing on the following case, SE Special Exception 2101, Special Exception ALFA-G Arcade. This means that the board is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The board is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testified tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, you may do so when prompted by the chair. All who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of the cases will now be sworn in.
Anyone, anyone who's going to be a witness, right?
Those who will be providing testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, now, if I can have the city clerk please read the ordinance by title.
Resolution 2022-05, approving the petition for a special exception to allow a 2016 square foot indoor recreational amusement use in commercial intensive CI zoning district located at 3747 South Military Trail as requested by the petitioner Stephen A. Yikes, agent for the owner 3757 Military Trail LLC, providing for appeal of conflict due resolutions, and providing for an effective date.
All right, now we're going to ask our council members to disclose any expartee communications. I'm going to start to my right, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
None.
Councilmember Noble?
I drove by the location the other day.
All right, for myself, none. Councilmember Dugel?
None.
Councilmember Diaz?
I did ask a clarifying question this morning of our city manager.
Just to clarify, expartee communication is with the party, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Technically, it can be of any party to the hearing, so the disclosure, if you discussed it with staff, would be appropriate.
Got it. So anybody want to change there? No, okay. And Councilmember Busque?
None.
All right, and at this point in time, I'd like to invite the applicant to the podium. Please state your name, address for the record, and begin your presentation.
My name is Stephen Yekes. I am a registered architect and have practiced in North Palm Beach for 45 years. My current address is 712 U.S. Highway 1, North Palm Beach, Florida. And this involves a tenant that received a special exception in the past for running an arcade establishment. And I was part of that presentation at that time, and we agreed on a maximum amount of space for that arcade at that time of roughly 1,908 square feet. If the space exceeded that footage, I would have to come back and ask for another special exception. At the time, we had no idea that we would want to expand. However, our space became available in the same building to the east. It was a much more finished space, but it was 108 square feet larger than the limit on the first special exception. So I'm coming back to you asking for another special exception to move the same use just to another bay in the same building. The number of machines that are operated are the same. The city asked me to hire a traffic engineer to see if there was any traffic impact from moving a little larger square footage of the same machines to a different part of the same building. And we filed a report with the city that says there was no difference in traffic. At the time, they had, they had a sign over their space. They literally moved down a few bays and moved the sign with them. So I'm asking for another special exception because I am 108 square feet larger than my last application.
All right, and at this point, is there a staff presentation?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Okay, as was stated, this is a special exception. Just to give you an idea, the address is 3747 South Military Trail. So it's on the west side of Military Trail, just south of Bowman Street. To give you an idea, again, it's moving from one bay to another bay within the same building, basically. So the old space was further west. The new space is closer to military. So I just wanted to kind of give a visual of what's going on here. So the request is to increase the footage of the indoor entertainment use from 1,700 square feet to 2,016 square feet. As was stated, there is no increase in the number of machines. They're still maintaining the same 50 machines. This building itself was built in 1984, so it's an older building. It was annexed into the city in 2010. It contains a future land use designation of CM and a zoning designation of CI, Commercial Intensive. The staff took a look at the petition, and we did our evaluation. There are certain questions and items that we need to evaluate in order to determine whether it meets the conditions for the issuance of a special exception. So some of the items we had to look to was, does it comply with the comprehensive plan? It does. We reviewed the future land use, the intergovernmental transportation element. We also had a look to see if the property ingress and egress was any issues. They're not changing anything. As was stated, a traffic study or statement was required to be obtained, and it indicated no difference. It was not an impact, I should say, to the particular transportation pass. Off-street parking, again, it's not changing. It's the same center. It was approved for the same type of retail. The refuge and service area is the same. Talking about a nuisance, it's actually going further away from a residential development. To the west is a residential development. By moving it closer to military, the noise level should be less than what it is presently. We also looked at utilities are available, screening and buffers, signage we talked about. Again, the staff report outlines all the items that we had taken a look at now. After looking at the project, we don't have to just take it the way it is. So we have conditions that the petitioner has agreed to. So first, we wanted to limit the operational hours from 10:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. It limits the location as well as the size of the tenant's space. So if they decide they want to move again, then you've got to come back to you again. So again, because everything is site-specific, so we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to determine whether this activity should continue if they decide they want to move it or they want a larger size. We are limiting it to 18 years or older, so it's not going to have children in it. And we also indicated that there should be no alcohol served within the particular site. Again, these conditions were reviewed and were approved by the petitioner. The, this item was sent to the Development Review Committee on January 13th, and any staff concerns that we have were addressed in the staff report. It did go to the Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals on February 24th, should be, I'm sorry, 2022, and recommended approval by 4-1. The one objection was that the overall condition of the plaza and concerning the non-conforming pile line, pile line sign. Now, it was annexed into the city. When they get annexed in, they're basically grandfathered in. This petition, again, is for a particular tenant's space. It's not for the overall shopping center. So although we can make the comments and request that the, you know, obviously, the shopping center owner address the concerns, it's a request from the tenant. But you still have the authority. If you decide that you want to address it, we can try to address it in this petition or through another mechanism. So just wanted to make sure that this was the comment that was made. We are recommending approval of SC 2101 through the adoption of Resolution 2022-05. Ask all that documentation, staff reports, presentations, testimony be included as part of the public record. And we are available to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any comments or questions from the Council? Councilmember Noble?
I personally drove by there on Sunday, and you don't have any condition for updating the physical appearance of the location? It's not quite desirable.
Yeah, again, the issue is because it's a specific tenant's space, and the tenant doesn't have authority over the shopping center because it's owned by someone else.
Well, the sign looks like it could be updated, or a few other things look like it could be updated. It does, it's not at the standard of the city of Green Acres.
Certainly, I asked the petitioner to contact the shopping center owner to let him know the desire from the comments made during Planning, Zoning Board of adjustments. I don't know if you had an opportunity to talk to the shopping center owner, Steve?
Well, the truth is, the shopping center owner is extremely ill. I had a really difficult time just getting the application to authorize me to represent him. And so I did try a few times to get him, but he's extremely ill. So I had no headway in that whatsoever. Well, I don't know whether we accept that as a reason, but certainly, we should, when he's feeling better, we should talk to him.
Any other comments or questions from the Council?
Yes.
Councilmember Busque?
Did I understand correctly, because they were annexed, they don't have to do anything? It would be completely voluntary?
If they make major changes, generally, at that point, they would have to come back to us. In order to, they wanted to increase a sign or something along those lines, but the status quo remains the same. Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes, thank you. I just had a question with regards to if they do not, I understand they have to meet these conditions to get approved, but after approval, if they fail to meet, continue to meet those conditions, what ramifications or what happens next? How is that enforced?
So I'm going to go to Kristy. I can answer if the children are better than I will, so I'm going to let her go.
This would be enforced through code enforcement. It would be a use violation, so that's how we'd address it.
Thank you.
Have there been any code issues with this particular tenant?
I'm not aware of any. Again, you know, obviously, based on what I'm hearing, we certainly can send a code officer out there to take a look at the shopping center to see if they are in compliance. see if they are in compliance. But again, they're under the county regs and not Green Acres regs, so.
I guess I'm going to the applicant with the tenant. Not, I'm talking about the tenant.
Ah.
My question is about the tenant. Has there been any issues since they requested the permit?
Um, there has not been an issue, but you should know that the tenant did move into the new space.
That's why, what I was trying to get to, because it sounded like they already moved.
And the petitioner's representative could discuss that.
Yeah, in fact, there was a code violation because they were asked to do this process after the owner or the tenant moved into the space. He didn't know that he needed another special exception, and quite frankly, I didn't remember because it was only a hundred and eight square foot difference. And I remember asking him, did he have any additional machines? And he said, no, I have the same number of machines. And there are other issues. I'll be very honest with you. For example, he, he received the business license, but no building permit. And one of the conditions of this is, if approved, I have to get him a building permit. The space was largely finished, but he did obviously make some modifications within the space and never got a building permit. So that's my responsibility to try to get that after I get this approved.
So there is code issue?
There is. And generally, we don't, you generally don't enforce it while they're trying to correct the problem.
Right.
So.
So maybe this is a conversation for a different time. How do we prevent this from happening? So, once again, a conversation for a different time.
Got it.
I have another question.
Sure, let me finish, please. Um, the, one of the, can you go back two slides or maybe one slide about what we require, what we're requiring off of them, their agreement? Can we also ask on here that no more machines will be added? Because obviously, they have another, according to this, another three hundred and sixteen square foot, so they can obviously add more machines, but that's not what we?
So I pointed some out because these were some changes because they had, remember, they had a special exception in the past. So recommendation on some of the conditions, on paragraph number four says, oh, you know what, should be a maximum of fifty amusement games or machines shall be on the premises. And Mayor, that should then address your concern.
Excellent. Okay, councilmember Noble?
Not talking about this location, but I'm talking about this industry. Who enforces these locations? They don't give away cash, but they give away gifts and other things. Do we have agents that go there and, to make sure that, you know, everything is done properly? And who would enforce it?
That's a state issue.
Yeah.
The state does, in fact, inspect these arcades at a routine basis. That, that's not a, a city issue.
I think that's like the gaming.
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was something.
Thank you for your answer.
All right, let me go back to my cheat sheet here. All right. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, at this point in time, I'd like to open public hearing for the quasi-judicial, uh, public hearing for Resolution twenty-two dash zero five. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the, of the resolution, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. And do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two zero five.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I would just ask that four G on the ordinance be a maximum of fifty amusement games or machines. So if you wouldn't mind including that in the motion?
Um, motion to approve Resolution twenty-two zero five with stating that the maximum of only fifty machines beyond the premises. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I will second, but I'm not happy with how it was handled. So echoing the mayor's comments, we need to address this going forward with putting the cart before the horse. But I will second this.
All right. All right, I have a motion made by council.
I have another question.
I have a motion made by councilmember Dugo, seconded by deputy mayor Tharp. Are there any questions? Councilmember Noble?
Is this two readings or one reading?
One reading.
One reading.
This would be a good place to table this item.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to table this item.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to table quasi-judicial public hearing, Resolution twenty-two zero five. We'll bring it up at the next council meeting. All right, moving on to.
Is there, is there a vote on that?
I, I thought on a, on a tabling, you didn't have to.
To, to table?
Yeah. No?
It, well, it would be a, it's essentially a superseding motion, since the motion on the floor was a motion to approve.
Got it.
So if we just have a vote on it, then that'll be.
On the tabling, okay. All right, so I do have a motion made by councilmember Busque, seconded by councilmember Diaz to table the item. I'm just going to go down, down to Diaz. I think it'll be easier. Councilmember Tharp?
Yes, to table.
Councilmember Noble?
Able.
Councilmember Dugo?
No.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
And councilmember Busque?
Yes.
All right, so it's four to one to table the item.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarification. All right, moving on to Resolution twenty-two dash twelve. If I can have our city clerk, please read the resolution by title.
Resolution twenty-two dash twelve, approving the application for site plan approval to construct twenty-five single-family dwelling units in a residential medium dash two zoning district located on the west side of Chickasaw Circle, north of the L dash one-one canal at six-six-four-five Chickasaw Road, as requested by the petitioner, Whitman Group, agent for the owner, South County Development LLC, providing for appeal of conflicting resolutions and providing for an effective date.
All right, and once again, we have director of Development and Neighborhood Services, Kara Irwin-Ferris presenting.
Thank you. Before you tonight is a project called Sunset Springs, S.P. twenty-one oh-one, and we're putting it forward through the adoption of Resolution twenty-two dash twelve. Just before I start, this is one of the final large acre parcels, five acres, that we have in the city that's vacant. As you know, we're about ninety-nine percent built out, and this is one of the, the last large acre parcel. I think in the future, we're looking towards redevelopment, but this is, other than what we can annex, this is what is in our city and vacant. So before you, I have a request from Yoan Machado of WGI, agent for multiple owners and site and development approval of twenty-five single-family dwellings. Just to give you a little bit of background, the site is located west of Chickasaw Circle, north of the L eleven canal at sixty-six forty-five Chickasaw Road. It's at the end, it's at the west end of Chickasaw Road. The four-point-nine-nine acre site was granted approval on October fourth, twenty, two thousand and four. It was annexed. It received a city land use of residential medium and a city zoning of R M two via ordinance two thousand and four dash fifteen. And at the time, the zoning approval limited the site to twenty-five single-family units through the zoning application. Currently, the applicant is before you tonight because previously, the site plan that was approved on October fourth, two thousand and four, for a project called Macy Estates, was never developed, and it did expire on October fourth, two thousand and six. They have made some modifications to the twenty-five unit development, which I'll show you mainly to access, but this is essentially the same twenty-five units that was previously approved in two thousand and four, but was never built. This is the boundary survey and tree survey of the four-point-nine-nine acre site that we are referring to as Sunset Springs. The site plan that the applicant is proposing is twenty-five single-family lots located on a, on a, on a, on a right-of-way. It'll be private road accessed and as part of the development, provide access. Let me go back one. So you, you see, these are, these lots are residential mediums, so they're a little bit smaller than residential low. These lots come in at about fifty by one fourteen, about fifty-eight hundred square feet, and they will have setbacks for residential, front setback of twenty, rear setback of ten, and side setbacks of seven and a half. So they'll be your typical single-family homes, not zero lot line or other type of, or townhome type development. They'll be single-family. The applicant is proposing to provide a U-turnaround at the end of the development. They have to show us that not only can the homeowners turn around within the development, or maybe people who have gone the wrong way and can turn around, but you also have to show us that fire trucks and trash, um, trucks can also pick up and turn around within the development. The applicant has provided us with a landscape plan for the site. They've met the requirements of the buffer planned for the perimeters of the site, as well as provide us with individual landscape plans for the different models within the development. On the north end of the site, it's up against Park Point. They have provided the required buffer. It's a type H buffer. They are required to reduce it to five feet when it's adjacent to, or makes up at least twenty feet with the adjacent buffer of the adjacent development. They have provided drainage on both sides of the development and then the external buffer as required by codes with trees at every twenty-five feet. This too shows the south half or south portion of the development where they are putting a lift station. They're going to screen it with landscaping, and this is the landscape plan for the north half of the development. If you see the area that's on the west side, adjacent to the Chickasaw right-of-way, that's also the type H buffer that's allowed to go to five feet because it's adjacent to what will be open space or a buffered space. And this is what our code allows. These are the single-family development landscape plans for the project. They have different models that they're proposing for approval on the site, and each of those will have their own landscape plan. So when we go out before we issue COs, we walk the site and make sure they have the required number of trees and plants, and in this case, they have more than what the code requires on these individual single-family lots. For the site, the water will come off of Chickasaw Road, and it'll, it'll, the lines will be in the right-of-way for the development. The applicant also has a sewer line and a lift station, which will discharge also onto Chickasaw Road. So just some of the considerations that came up, we do not have a variance requirement for the north and south buffer. Our code allows that reduction in exchange for what it's adjacent to. So it understands that you're not really going to be buffering it for much, so it allows for that reduction. But they still have to put the same amount of bushes and the same amount of trees within that area. And also, I'd like to bring up Chickasaw Road. So as you are aware, we are in the process of permitting for Chickasaw Road right now through Lakewood Drainage District as well as South Florida Water Management District. The applicant has worked with us because they have a section that they're also going to have to build, where they're, on their site, the area between where their site starts and where their entrance begins, they will also have to bury that pipe and provide the same road segment that we're providing on our site. So they have worked with us through the permitting process. They've worked with us through Lakewood Drainage District. They've taken the time to go through that process, and they've committed that they're going to do their portion of the development. We are actually permitting the whole thing because Lakewood Drainage District wants to see, see a cohesive project. They don't, they don't want to have, you know, bits and pieces, but they also want to make sure that in the case we finish ours first, we have a plan in place for when the applicant can finish theirs for connections. Staff does recommend approval of S.P. twenty-one oh-one with the twenty-one conditions of approval, and it was also approved by the Land Development Staff on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. We did do, through the COVID, we did do our LDS, or now we call them DRC meetings, where a little more informal, we sent out the packages and they reviewed them. We did Zoom meetings, but this has gone through a comprehensive review during that time period, and it has been seen by all of the departments. It also has traffic concurrency, it has water concurrency, it has all of the school concurrency requirements that need to be met in order for development to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for the council? Councilmember Dugo?
Um, is the access road to this proposed development part of the city's plan when we're, our plan for approving Chickasaw? Is that part of our plan, the access?
We are, it will have to mirror what we're doing. They'll have to build a portion of that, and they're also going to have to bury that pipe as well, or they're going to have to pipe that canal, is a better way for me to say it, that is, runs along the front of, of their project. So they do have that responsibility. Thank you.
Deputy mayor Tharp, and then councilmember Noble.
I'm making a, a jump here in an assumption that they're moving forward this project because we move forward with Chickasaw Road. Is that a fair statement?
I'm sure it made the project more desirable, yes. It has been sitting out there as a five-acre lot for a long time without development opportunity.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noble, and then councilmember Busque.
Uh, that canal has been there a long time, but primarily, I see it dry. What is the purpose of that canal? Which way is the, the water supposed to flow? And when? When is, when is it supposed to operate? And how?
It's water conveyance for South Florida, I mean, for Lakewood Drainage District. So it drains properties from the west to the east, and it connects underground under the road and further all the way east out to, you know, the ocean. So through a collection of canals, structures.
It flows east.
It flows east.
All the water flows south and east. All right, councilmember Busque?
No, I just want to say I'm very excited about this project. Mrs. McHugh, actually, and I were discussing this five years ago, and it was such a desolate-looking piece of property. So it's, I think it's a win for the city that this is being developed. So, thank you.
Um, I, I do have a question, I guess, for the, the people that are here representing the project. So we, we approved the previous project, nothing happened. What are the probability that it would get, that they're actually going to break the ground and develop this?
Well, I, I know you're asking them, but.
Yeah, sort of.
I spoke to the property owner previously, who put this up for sale. The reason this project died is because of the, the bubble or the recession.
Okay.
So the developer that he had under contract at the time was going through the process to get all of their permits and had actually put a lot of money into the project, and at the last minute pulled out because they didn't want to have land on their portfolio that couldn't be developed. So he was very upset by that, and he's, he's, so he's been sitting on the property since that time.
So we, we expect them to begin construction in the next twelve months, eighteen months?
I think soon because they are pushing us on a schedule for Chickasaw.
All right, I'm, I'm seeing head, head nut, so that's good. All right.
You have a presentation too, if you'd like to see their presentation.
I think, I think that's, all right. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash twelve?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash twelve?
Second.
All right, motion made by deputy mayor Tharp, seconded by councilmember Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to board appointments for scholarship committee chair, we have city manager Andrew McHugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Policy sixteen provides that the scholarship committee chair shall be a member of and appointed by the city council for a term of two years. Councilmember Busque was appointed to the committee March of two thousand and twenty, serving as the chair for two thousand and for 2020 and 2021. New chairperson therefore needs to be appointed for the Scholarship Committee, and they will be appointed for 2022 and 2023. Staff is recommending the appointing of a chair to serve for the 2022, 2023 years.
All right, so who's the past chair? Is that Councilmember Busque?
Previous chair was Councilmember Busque.
Anything that you would like to share with us, Councilwoman Busque?
Well, it was my honor to serve as chair for the past two years. Unfortunately, the committee meetings were all virtual, which made it a little difficult. So I'm really excited for the next chair to be able to meet in person.
All right, Councilmember Noble.
Are we taking names? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, the council, the council will
I recommend Chuck Schrader chairman.
I believe it's a council member.
It has to be a council member.
May I?
All right. Councilmember Dugo.
I would recommend Councilwoman Diaz because of her experience and background to this committee, and that would be what I would recommend.
I will second that no hard.
I'm fighting you for that second. Sorry. It's good to accept.
Councilmember Diaz.
I will gladly accept that nomination. Thank you.
All right.
Very good.
Do we have to do a motion?
For the record, let's do it as a motion, yeah, that would be great.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Dugo, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain from that one.
All right, that motion carries 4-0.
Why 4-0?
She abstained. All right, moving on to board reappointment for the Scholarship Committee. City Manager Andrew McHugh.
Thank you very much. As I'm sure you know, the Scholarship Committee was established in 1997 through Council Policy 16. There are currently two expired regular members of the Scholarship Committee as of March 2022. Those two members are Mr. Charles Shaw and Mr. Dennis Smith, both residents of the city and may have expressed an interest in serving another term. Staff is recommending that Mr. Shaw and Mr. Smith to serve another three-year term as regular members of the Scholarship Committee.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Charles Shaw and Mr. Dennis Smith to serve another three-year term.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. Tonight, there's no discussion items, so we're moving on to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward, state your, state your name and address for
Hello, my name's Nathan Galang. I live on 3170 Santa Catalina Place. I just wanted to come up here and congratulate those who recently won the election, those who were reelected, those who were newly elected. I ran, as some of you may know, it was a great experience. It was a pleasure to talk to people, to hear about their problems, and really understand what people are talking about on the local level. And I definitely plan to continue to stay involved in the community, to help people even without the title. So I also want to thank the people that supported me, the people that endorsed me, the mayor, the deputy mayor, Councilmember Basquet. It's an honor. And I also want to thank the people that voted. I got 41% of the vote. It was a great honor to, to, to be considered a good pick, and, you know, even though I didn't win, I hope to make that 41% very proud. But yeah, there were a lot of promises. I saw Mayor promising new vision, new, new ideas, new life, and I hope those promises are also kept. But yeah, once again, congratulations to everybody, and thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Leonard Grant. I reside at 1522 Prime Drive, and I also would like to congratulate everybody on the appointments and all that, that's come about. I just want to say thank you, first of all, for allowing me to speak. But over the last few months, I've had the pleasure of speaking to many of our residents, and of course, they all have their own ideas and concerns of what they believe the city should do and or not do. However, there was one concern that I actually heard over and over again, and that I would like to bring to the council's attention. As we know, our city is made of many families, and many of us can relate to when we were growing up, we would play outside and wouldn't have to worry about anything. But now, there's a safety concern for our children. The common request that I heard was that the residents would just like to have signs in the streets that say, "Slow down," that kids are playing. And I would just like to ask the city manager and the council if they could work something out that the different neighborhoods could get these kinds of signs put into the neighborhoods. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, hi. My name is Joe Brodello, and my husband Dave, we live at 3801 Heather Drive West in Green Acres. I'm here on a rental business license that I got a delinquent's notice on, and it has no date on it or anything, and this tells me it has to be paid within 30 days. I was here today talking out there to the business license and everyone out there. I was here like for 45 minutes, and they didn't know when this letter went out because there was no date on it, so they told me probably March 1st. And I never ever in my life had a problem with Green Acres in their letters. All my mail goes to a P.O. box, and I always get my mail, and this is the first time. They said they've sent letters out last year three times, never got any of those. I don't know if it's because of the COVID. They also sent, went out in January this year. I didn't get that letter either. So, and delinquent, and I don't feel like I should have to pay for this, and I don't know where to go from here.
Plus, plus they're charging, and it's over an amount of money
Interest.
Interest, or whatever you want to call it, for the
They're charging for
They want
Hold on, delinquent fee, they're charging $100. They're charging the unit fee, which is only $38, and then a collection fee, which is 25. So it's like 175 per unit. And I've always got, you know, sometimes I would have, like, from Green Acres, I would have a, for codes, would come by and, you know, write up something for in the front yard or whatever, and I would always get their letters and comply to them. This is the only thing that I've ever had a problem with Green Acres. And now, all my mail never went to the post office, four letters, even the one in January, it doesn't even make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
When I was here for 45 minutes today, I had, there was other people that came in had the same complaint. They never had a letter previous or anything, it was just delinquents.
And what?
And I don't mind paying my bills, but I don't feel as though I should have to pay this one.
So
And I don't know what to do from here.
And I don't, I don't mean this to come across as rude. We normally don't enter in dialogue with, when we have public comments. What we're going to do is we're going to have our city manager contact you, please. Give us five minutes after the meeting ends, and we'll give you the proper telephone number so that they can help you out. So just, we don't normally enter into dialogue, don't public comments.
I haven't done that for the first time here, so.
But somebody from our staff will help you out.
Let me, let me ask you another question, as far as Dodd Road in Green Acres off of, by the library. That Dodd Road right there is one long strip. I'm going to tell you right now, the people go racing down that road. We've almost got hit a few times by cars. We ride bikes, we walk. There should be speed bumps in there or something.
I think, is that the road that we paved, the parking lot? We did a couple of few
They opened that
Correct, yes, there were some additional parking spaces put in on the north side of the library, so that, that is Dodd Road, and they're doing a development. Catalina Estates is going back off of Dodd Road as well. So we can definitely talk to law enforcement about that.
Because all the way down Dodd Road, since they opened that, it's nothing but a drag strip.
It's a drag strip, everybody, this
So I don't know if they could put speed bumps in there.
Thank you. Well taken. Our captain's probably paying attention, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jane Justice, and I live in 3253 Perimeter Drive. And I would like to also congratulate the winners of the race. And I would like to say something. I appreciate you, Mr. Grant, for the recommendation to make our neighborhood safe. But I wonder how many people here know that 200 million illegal aliens have come across our border this last year, over 200 million, and they have been dispersed all over the country. And this is a fact, whether you hear it or not on the news. So that's something very important. I mean, we can put up a sign, but how can we keep our children safe if we don't get to the news and we have an open border on our country, okay? That means we are all in danger. And secondly, I'd like to say that, I'm sorry, I missed the swearing in. Swearing is, I don't know if you swore on the Bible or not, I don't know who you were swearing to, but I missed that presentation. Now, I would like to say that it's very important when you give an endorsement, when you give an endorsement, and I think that you should not listen to what people say, but you should watch what they do. And if you have no track record, I don't understand how you can endure somebody that does not have a track record. I would like to say also that in this day and age, and in this dreadful time that we live in, there is no such thing as nonpartisan elections. We might as well throw that right out the window, okay? It's sad to say, but that just no longer exists anymore, okay? And so I hope those people take their seats here at the council, that they all do their best to serve the people of Green Acres, okay? Regardless, okay? We don't need to change anything, whether somebody's a man or a woman, okay? You know what I'm talking about, Mrs. Diaz? I want to say this, that there is a smear campaign that went on here. Now, when something is, when something is working fine, why do we break it? Okay, people? Why do we break it? When somebody has a good track record, why the politics, all right? The smear campaign on a good man who served this council, Jonathan Pierce, I'm going to, I'm going to recognize that he served this city very well. And I would also say that I don't think that if anybody's working night and day trying to pay their bills, that they want to give someone with no experience, I'm talking about you, Mr. Flores, Mayor Flores, somebody with no experience, no offense to this young man over here, no offense. You conducted a nice race, you fought the good fight, and I appreciate your interest in politics. But listen, this is about people, and this is about safety, and this is about running our city well, and I hope that everybody took their swearing in quite serious. And remember this, we have an open border with 200 million people come across that border, illegal, shipped all over, and then we're going to, no.
All right, ma'am.
We're going to talk about safety? Okay, just remember, just remember. This is very important what I said, and I thank you for listening because very valid points. When something is working, why do you want to break it? You want something new? Do you really want something new? There's something new going on all across this country. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Mayor?
Joel, did you miss this one?
That's the one that we tabled.
Oh, we tabled it.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
This is the one we tabled.
They won't let me.
You're good? Okay.
They won't let me.
All right, moving on to city manager's report. City Manager McHugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it was a long one tonight, but there was a lot of really good information that we went over, so we really appreciate your patience as we went through everything. We have a lot of really good stuff coming forward within the next few months. In particular, the whole process regarding the comprehensive plan is a pretty exciting one, so we hope our residents get involved, our businesses get involved, we will engage them as well for their feedback and participation. But I believe our zoning administrator said it well, that this is really going to define where we're going in the next 10, 20 years, so we want to make sure it counts and everyone is involved in that process. So we're really looking forward to that. Just a reminder that, and we have a couple more things, just a reminder that we do have a special meeting next Tuesday on the 29th for the redistricting presentation from FAU. In addition, the maps will, the proposed maps will be reviewed by the council, so we're looking forward to that. There will then be, the council will need to approve a map, a selected map. First reading will be on the 18th of April, and second reading will be on the 2nd of May. And last, but definitely not least, I have to recognize our city clerk and her office. If you have been in City Hall over the last six days, you would have, would have had a lot of crowds to deal with in our passport area, and in six days, our passport office processed $24,320 in passports. And I think the amazing thing is, is that the only money that the county, the city receives in passports is the $35 processing fee and $15 for pictures and $1 for copies. So $24,320.75 in six days. Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Christie, anything from the city attorney's report?
I don't have anything to report. If there's anything that the council ever wants us to touch on briefly at the end of a meeting, we're happy to, you know, take suggestions on that. I would like to thank the clerk for keeping us informed during the election and keeping it smooth.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Excellent. All right. Moving on to the mayor and city council report, I'm going to start to my right tonight. Deputy Mayor Tharp.
First, councilmembers Noble, Dugo, and new member Diaz, congratulations. I look forward to serving with you guys for at least my next two years. Wanted to bring up a topic if we could add it to the, probably the 18th of April's discussion items. Would really like to start looking again at campaign signs. It's not just ours, it's everywhere, they, you know, we owe yours to Boynton Beach. Just want to see if there's anything we can do, adopt, like the city, the village of Wellington, where they, you know, have a little bit more restricted, so if we could, you know, possibly do some research, what other municipalities don't, I'd appreciate it. And that's all.
Councilwoman Noble.
I have a question for the city manager. When do we select a new deputy mayor one day?
That will be at the next meeting on the 4th of April.
And can I assume that I will be the deputy mayor because of longstanding procedure?
What procedure? For clarification?
Clarification on that, I, I thought we, the board selected one.
The last several deputy mayors also served multiple years consecutively.
It was passed on to persons who were not deputy mayors?
Not the last two years, not the last two times, Mr. Noble.
I'm sorry, you weren't, you're incorrect, sir.
It's, it's okay, we're, I'm pretty sure the city manager will update us on
Will we discuss on that day?
Yes, yes, they will, will include language that, the language from the charter, the
language from any policies that we have in the item summary for that meeting prior to the council having any discussion or any considerations or voting being done by the council.
And will it be voted on that day?
Yes, that is correct, it will be.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dugo.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Busque.
I'd just like to congratulate everybody who won their election and is sitting up here. Look forward to working with you, and that's all I got. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do I get to, to start?
Oh, sorry, you got that again. Oh, I'm sorry. You got that again.
We're not having this again, are we?
I'm very-
For the, for the mayor's report, I actually don't have much. I did want to thank our city clerk and your staff, not only for the passports, but you also ran an election.